Good evening, everyone. The hour being eight o'clock or later, I'd like to call the April 29th School Committee meeting to order. I am very sorry for the delay. We were having technical problems. We are still operating under the governor's order that allows meetings to operate remotely, and for that reason, all of our votes will be taken by roll call this evening. And the first order of business this evening is a public hearing on school choice. So I will do a quick attendance roll call vote, and then we will open, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing. So for attendance purposes, Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Present.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. Okay. So I need a motion, please, to open the public hearing for school choice.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Bill, a second by Carrie, polling the committee. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen and myself, Nancy, yes. Okay. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Goff.
Yes, this vote for school choice must be taken annually as the school committee can go on record as to whether or not to become a school choice community. My recommendation is at this time to vote not to become a school choice district. Next year, as we emerge from the pandemic, we are continuing to look at class size. We know this is fluid, and we're entering the FY22 budget season, making sure we are meeting all of the individual education needs. Right now, it is, it's just not predictable, and I'll open it up to the school committee for any, any comments or questions.
Are there questions or comments by the committee? Carrie?
I do have some comments, but I don't know if there's anybody that want, that is, I'm willing to wait, I guess, if there are members of the public who want to speak first, if we have any.
Is there anybody in the chat to attend, interested in speaking on this point, Bill?
Yes, we have Andrew Flowers.
Okay.
Okay, so I will, would you like me to move Mr. Flowers in as a panelist or just unmute his vo, give him the opportunity to talk?
Either or.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Okay. All right, Mr. Flowers, you should be able to talk when you unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. First, I just want to start by thanking everyone. Thank you Superintendent Goff, and for the school committee to have this conversation. I've been curious about this program, and you all are the experts, and, you know, of course, I defer to your judgment. I trust the school committee, all seven of you have done a fantastic job, so I trust you. My first point, as I've researched this program, again, as a novice here, is that it's been around the inter-district school choice program since 1991, and I was curious to find that a majority of school districts across Massachusetts do stay opted in. And furthermore, I found it interesting that the way the law was written, there is quote, a, there is a quote, presumption that all school committees will participate. Now, I completely understand the uncertainty, given the pandemic this past 15 months or so, and the points made by Dr. Goff, but given this presumption and given the history and widespread, what I would call success of this program, because it seems to fly under the radar, more than 17,000 students participate, that's five times what Metco is. It seems that people who do participate are generally happy, so I was curious why Walpole doesn't. I, I, I think there could be two good reasons why you should consider. One is enrollment offsets, and the second is, is potential DEI goals, diversity, equity, inclusion goals. So for the first point about enrollment offsets, I'll try to post in, well, I can't post in the chat, a, a chart. So I'll have to send it to you afterwards, but what I noticed from the, from the DESI public data is that Walpole sending students through the school choice program, or maybe it's counted as tri-county students, I, I'm not sure, but the number of FTE full-time equivalent pupils that Walpole sends in 2020 was 21 students, according to the DESI data. And of course, we, we received zero. So we're already sending students out of the district and paying tuition, because the, the sending district has to pay the tuition, as I understand it, to the receiving district. So we're already paying $155,000, according to DESI, I think, through this program. I don't know if it includes tri-county, but I know we've had increasing enrollments in tri-county as well. So one, we're losing students, both through this program, which, as I understand it, this is going to be one of my questions in a second, is that you can't stop people from sending students in this program. So i- if I want to send my daughter, for instance, to a Brockton school, which is, which remains opted in, I don't want to do that, by the way, but I could, as, as I understand it, correct me in a second when I ask that question. So i- if you can't stop parents in Walpole from sending their students to school choice districts, but we're not accepting as a receiving district, we're just losing money. And so, so number one, there's an enrollment offset, so we can help our fiscal outlook. But the second point about diversity, equity, inclusion, I think, is even more important, because when you look at the map of the school districts that opt out, it's almost entirely the inner rung suburbs of Boston. And the further you go out, when you hit majority-minority school districts like Avon, Randolph, Brockton, they, that are near us, they stay opted in. So those are literally the, the closest districts east of us that, that are, that are school choice sending, that are school choice receiving districts. Pretty much everything else east of us, as I, as I've found, are, are opted out. So for those two reasons, I, I'm just curious why, you know, you would want to stay opted out, again, given the point about the pandemic. So those are the two reasons, I, I think it's interesting, but I defer to you also. My two questions, let me get to my two questions. My first question is, is what I alluded to earlier. Is it true, correct me, Dr. Goff, or su, or other school administration or school committee people, is it true that Walpole cannot stop parents from sending their students? That's not affected, right? So the number of sending students, is it, is it not affected by the vote tonight? Is that true?
That's true, as I understand it, Andrew, yes.
So i- if, so in other words, we're not, th- this vote is only about receiving students. And then, so my second question is about how the school committee or the, or the school administration decides on the number, like, so say, say you were just to take my, again, I'm a novice here, you were to take my advice and to stay opted in. Because again, you have to actively opt out, as you all know, every year, but let's say you were to take my advice. Don't you get to decide how many students you receive? It's, it's not like you can, you, you take 100 students, right? So how, explain to me that process of, of describing the number, that if you want to opt, stay opted in, how, how, how do you decide the number of students you're willing to receive?
Mr. Buckley, did you want to answer that?
Oh, through you, Madam Chair. That's a great question, Mr. Flowers. The, the district, a few things to unpack. As, as you are correct, that the district every year decides whether or not to opt in, and we, we also can decide, and we have, I believe, you know, Dr. Goff, may I correct me for a moment, maybe two or three years ago, we did opt in in certain areas. We can decide at what level to accept students. And one of the things that, from my recollection, or nine years in the school committee, is that we looked at class size as, as indicators of where we could accept students to continue to keep the level of class size that the community has asked, asked us to maintain after the 2012 override. And when you, when you accept students, you accept them for their entire life within the district. So if we accept a first grader, we accept that first grader, from first grade to 12th grade. And we also accept, automatically accept all of their siblings, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that's my understanding of, of the program. So while we do have some students who, who go out through school choice, many of them return after a few years. I think we can probably find some data on that as well. The, the committee looks at generally, and the decisions we've made in the past, again, from my recollection, who have been really focused often on space within each, each district, and each kind of grade level as well. And so, well, and, and again, Dr. Goff could possibly help elucidate this for me. If we become a accepting district, it, it becomes a lottery, so it doesn't necessarily help us reach our diversity and inclusion goals in the way that, say, Metco, which is an amazing program, does. So I think, you know, maybe Dr. Goff can speak, but that's
Yeah.
And that's kind of why we've gone the way we have in, in past years.
I can, I can speak to a little bit about that. Yeah, you're correct, and, and you're correct, like placement in school choice, it is based on the number of open seats and given grades, and also the, the availability of seats or space in, in the school or grade that's requested, so that, that's, that's absolutely correct. And in terms of trying to get equity or diversity, it is a, to Bill's point, it is a, is a lottery. And I believe residents, you know, have first choice, and then non-residents that if it, if it, that's if it exceeds the number of available spaces, then it is a, it's a random, it's in the form of a random lottery when they make that request. And of course, we all know that the school committee cannot discriminate the admission of, of any child based on whether it's race, religion, national origin, gender identification, special need, academics performance, or proficiency in, in the English language.
Got it. Thank you both. No, that, that's helpful, and, and again, what Mr. Buckley said, and what Superintendent Goff said, for the most part, drives with my understanding. I mean, as a, just to reiterate, everyone who applies to this is not a resident. I mean, in other words, if you accept a student, they're going to come from out of district. And the sibling point is, is well taken, that's my understanding as well, from what Mr. Buckley said. So for instance, if you were to participate, stay opted in, again, you have to actively opt out every year, which is this vote tonight. If you were to stay opted in, you could, in theory, say, we're going to take one person, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you could also decide the grades. So if you have space in middle school and high school, but not elementary, you could say, like, and I know many districts do, six through 12, or six through eight. And I guess my point being, to test the waters about who participates, who's interested in Walpole. I know in past school committee settings, or, excuse me, in past finance committee settings, when we've looked at the tri-county numbers, we've talked about how the district, and I don't put this on the school committee or the, or the administration, I put this on the town, needs to do a better job of selling the, the fantastic Walpole public school system to both the residents of this town, but I think part of the kind of logic of this program, I think, is that you could attract future residents, because I think a lot of, of parents in neighboring districts look at Walpole, want to test the waters, maybe send their kid here for a year or two before they purchase a home and move here. And I think to be welcoming and stay, stay, to remain opted in the program, we don't know unless we try if it'll affect the DEI goals. You're right, it's a lottery, we don't know. But just looking at the map, again, I wish I could share some information here. Looking at the map, um, we would be, I think, in an advantageous position, is my, is my, you know, amateur projection of this, to increase our DEI, DEI goals. So those are my two questions, um, and I encourage you to, you know, I, I get, I get that this year is tough. I totally get that this year is tough. Maybe in future years, you can revisit this. I just hope that you have a, 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 a full-scale conversation like you're having tonight in future years, when you have more certainty about the enrollment outlook and the budget outlook. But the current enrollment offset in fiscal points that I made, and, and the DEI, the potential for DEI goals, I think, make this a really interesting program. So, so thank you both. I mean, thank you all.
Mark, Bill, and then myself. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I will, I will just add that, you know, in terms of diversity, it's, it's a, it's a worthwhile goal, but it, it just seems to me, from my understanding of, of, of this program, that is, if you opt in, you really gain revenue. Communities opt in because they want to gain revenue. I mean, face it, that's what communities do. Some communities will opt in because they want to offset lost revenue. Like, for instance, my understanding that Brockton will opt in because they want to offset lost revenue from students that might opt in to, say, West Bridgewater. And if there are certain programs, or say, teachers, or people living, that work in the community, it's easier for them to have their, their children enroll in that community, so I don't, my understanding is that it does not add to diversity, that most communities see it as either a revenue opportunity or an offset of loss of revenue. I hate to put it in such succinct terms, but it is, but it is a point to consider.
Go ahead, Bill. Thank you, Mark.
Through you, Madam Chair. Dr. Goff mentioned something that kind of jogged my memory. When we, when we make ourselves a school choice district, you said we have to open ourselves up to residents first. Is it my recollection, and, and I'm hazy, because this is, I think, my ninth year doing this, that if we say, open ourselves up for us to be school choice in elementary school, that if you're at Old Post Road, you could school choice yourself into Fisher in town, so it, it first goes to students within the community, and I think that's one of the, the areas of reticence. I know, again, love Metco, because students come in early in the process, and we want students for the largest width and breadth of time within our, our school system. And so I, I think one of the pitfalls is, for example, I went to Fisher School, and I think Fisher School is a superior elementary school, and I, I kind of joke about how it's the best elementary school in town. And, you know, over, over the course of the years, there's been debates about which one is better or worse. And I think that was one of the other reasons we were maybe reticent, is people trying to skirt the district lines within Walpole and move from, say, Old Post to Fisher, or Fisher to Boyd, and that, that could have, could kind of have unintended ripples as well.
I think you're right, Bill, as I understand it. Carrie and then me. Go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you. So personally, I have felt that I have been really under-informed just about what the inter-district choice program is, and, and the ins and outs of, of how it works. So I've tried to educate myself a little bit. I've done some research. I've looked at the law. I've talked to members of other school committees. I also think people in our community really don't understand these ins and outs. So I'm happy about the points that are being raised tonight, that we can have a better understanding of the issue. I myself had been wondering about whether becoming a choice district might be beneficial for us. I hoped that it could be a way to make Walpole Public Schools accessible to families who are dissatisfied with their current district. I thought maybe it could boost our enrollment in, in grade levels where we do have seats available, and with the potential benefit of diversifying our student body, and helping our students forge relationships with students from other communities. That being said, I think there are clearly drawbacks to the program as it's currently constituted. You know, I think the, the reimbursement rate for the tuition, that the sending district pays the receiving district, it doesn't come close to what our per people expenditure is per year, and I think that's an issue. You know, and I know others have mentioned the potential unpredictability and costs that it could bring. And as Mark mentioned earlier, it seems that a lot of the districts that participate now are doing it out of financial necessity to offset losses or to balance their budget. And it just seems like if you're not in that position right now, that program, there seem to be more disincentives than incentives for, for participating, and I think it could be a great tool to have beneficial impacts on districts for diversifying their student bodies, but some changes would need to be made to the application in the selection process for that to actually occur, because right now, like was mentioned, it is, you know, a blind lottery. And so, I don't know, I think the idea of, of testing the waters, maybe, and, and doing a small pilot, like Mr. Flowers suggested, could be really interesting, and maybe something to discuss in the future. But I think that Dr. Goff's point about, you know, the uncertainty of enrollment post-COVID is very well taken. And, and if we were to consider it, you know, this year may not be the best year, but perhaps we could consider, as a body, you know, how we might advocate for changes to the program at the state level, just to make it more mutually beneficial to communities to participate. The current model really seems to be pitting district against district, competing for state dollars, and I think that's a, a real shame and a real disincentive right now for communities like Walpole.
Jen, and then, then I am going, but go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, to Andrew's point about vigorous debate, you know, some of us have done this for a while, and we've debated this in past years, spent quite a good portion of a meeting on it, so I didn't want people to think that we were sitting here and just taking a vote without having deliberated over this in the past. We did in one particular year where we were having a revenue issue. We had a very active debate, and I believe, as Bill said, that we did try it out for the one year. But there was just so much unpredictability with siblings coming into the district, and, you know, the space constraints we had. In addition, as everyone's saying, it didn't necessarily, like, you, you don't have control over who's coming in. And, you know, from an attorney's perspective, I just, I, I remember being very worried about making sure we had applied even-handed policies as the law requires, and it, it was, you know, I, I want to say, what was it, four or five years ago, but there was a pretty active debate over it. So I did just want to say that, but that was my, you know, hesitation was, without knowing what space was going to look like in future years, and where the siblings were going to come into the school, because it's really hard to see that, and how do you, we're under a lottery system, control that. Those were the reasons why, you know, we gave it a shot, and then I remember it was under Lincoln Lynch, we discussed the following year, that, you know, it didn't meet our expectations, and it wasn't meeting some of these goals. So I applaud the thought and the creativity behind this, but I'm not sure it's the way to get there to increase our diversity and inclusion goals. So, thank you.
Thanks, and I would add a few points. I do think from, from having followed this and issues around charter schools and a- a- any kind of choice within Massachusetts, we're all fighting for the same dollars, and it, it almost always does have as much as maybe this program was not initially designed to be as financially motivated as it has turned out, I think that, that most people would admit that, that they go into it because they're trying to make up for lost revenue or seek additional revenue. I was reading about this, again, recently, just in preparation for this, and the professor from, from BU was doing a study, and it confirmed what I thought was the case, which is that it tends to be the more advantaged families in a community that take advantage of this program, the ones who have somebody home in order to provide transportation to the other town, both in the beginning of the day and when school is over. It also is a, a program that is, tends to be regional. If Town X is surrounded by six towns, and Town X decides to dip into the idea of school choice, often the other towns go around, around them also do. And I think you have to weigh the odds of if, if your town joins this program, and so do all the other towns around here, would you gain more or would you lose more in that scenario? As, as has been mentioned, we did do a test case a couple of years ago, so a small number of grades were available, and we didn't get any takers for it. I think that the thing that just doesn't feel fair to me is that, and we've been this, this town in the past, but if you're at a point where you are starting to have to lay people off, and you need an override, and you don't succeed, you, it's, those are the towns that lose, lose their students to the town next door that's doing school choice. I know, for example, that there are a number of students in the Natick Public Schools that live in Framingham, because there, there's a perception that one town is better than the other. So I know that we've spent a fair amount of time looking into this. I, I definitely don't think it's the right thing for this year, and I have concerns in general about the whole program. I do understand the idea of maybe we could change something at the state level. I also have spent a lot of time working on that with people like Jen, and I basically have learned, in my opinion, you got to pick your battles, and this, not that I wouldn't be supportive of it, but it falls into the same category as, as charter schools, in my opinion. So I would recommend that we don't join the, the school choice program for this year, for sure. Other comments? I know there was somebody in the chat that wanted to, Sean, go ahead. I think the chat is, is empty at this point of questions, but go ahead, Sean.
Just wondering, since it appears that there was a previous pilot of this, if there was information or documentation that could be shared to further inform us about Walpole's history and some of the past decision-making to help, you know, us down the road in the future?
Yeah, I don't know how much, I mean, I don't know what you do if, I, I just remember verbally being told that we didn't have any applicant, so I'm not sure
Okay.
whether there's too much documentation, there might be, but you know, you, we could find out what year it was, for sure. But beyond that, I'm not too sure what we, we can look, we can certainly look. There any other questions or comments? Am I correct, Bill, that there's nobody in the chat?
Correct, there are no other hands raised, and I believe the answer was addressed in the chat.
Okay. That being said, Superintendent Goff, do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay, then we need to take a vote on whether we want to be a school choice district for the 2022 school year. Need a motion, please?
I can make a motion to not become a school choice district for the school year 2021, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sean, and the second was Kristen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Need to poll the committee, Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Nancy, yes, sorry. Okay. That gets us then to our high school student report.
Yes. Do you have to, are we good? Do we have to close the public?
Oh, good point. We do have to close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the hearing, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Carrie, polling the committee, Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen and myself, Nancy, oh, I'm sorry, Kristen, you didn't even wait.
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. Okay, that gets us to you, Scotty Cameron, the high school student report. It's all you. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Scotty Cameron. I'm a junior representative, representing the student body tonight. First off, spring sports have just started up again, with lacrosse, track, tennis, girls' golf, baseball, and softball, that all started smoothly this Monday. Also, sports directors are determining whether wrestling will be able to run this spring, as originally planned. Additionally, the AP exams are about to begin. Although learning the equivalent of a college-level course in the span of half a school year seems daunting to many, the overall consensus is that students are prepared, thanks to the diligence of many teachers. Furthermore, students who take foreign language classes are encouraged to take the Apple exam, or the assessment of performance towards proficiency in languages exam. Students who take this exam will have the opportunity to receive a stamp of bilinguism on their diplomas. Moreover, the music department has been very busy organizing events for the school community. They scheduled a virtual coffee house for tomorrow night, which features many student musicians. In addition, the music department has also scheduled their first in-person music concert, which will be played outside following COVID guidelines. Music students like myself are very excited to perform for the first time in over a year, and I would encourage you all to attend. The concert's date is May 19th at 5:00. And lastly, and probably the most exciting update I get to give tonight, is that after many months of hard work, the Commission on Renaming is proud to announce that their work to find a new mascot name has finally concluded. As we all, as we are all aware, this work involved an exhaustive process, where over 600 where over 600 individual suggestions from the community, soliciting over 160 individual names for consideration, were finally, after many meetings, reduced to four names submitted for voting. These four names were the Walpole Wolf Pack, the Walpole Wild, the Walpole Timberwolves and Walpole. We are very proud and happy to announce that our new mascot is the Walpole Timberwolves. A timber wolf inhabits vast areas of the northern hemisphere. Timberwolves are known for their teamwork, strength, speed and agility. Additionally, the timber industry in Walpole has a long, rich tradition. It wasn't until the 1660s that the first permanent settlers appeared in what is now Walpole Center. They were lured to this area by the stories of the rich timberland. They came in hopes of building a sawmill. The sawmill was the first industry in the Walpole area. Thomas Clapp, who married Mary Fisher, became the owner of the mill. There were four families living at the sawmill, Thomas Clapp, James Falls, Quentin Stockwell and Samuel Parker. Our town forest is a living tribute to the very, very important industry in Walpole. And I think at this time, Doc, I'm gonna send the new uh, logo.
I will, I'm gonna share my screen and we will put it out there.
Yeah, as you can see, students are very excited for this new mascot. They like the animal logo and the W on the forehead as well. So yeah, uh, we are very excited to adopt the Timberwolves as our new mascot. And as we close up on the year, I think it is so important to look back on how much we, as a school community, were able to accomplish within the crazy parameters of the pandemic. Starting with the monumental decision to change the mascot to today, it is very impressive all that we were able to accomplish. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time, uh, but if not, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks, Jen. As always, you do an amazing job, Scotty. Go ahead, Bridget.
I, I have a question. It might not necessarily be for, for Scotty, but thanks Scotty for that um, announcement. That's really exciting. Maybe this is more for, for Mr. Imbush. Um, we're, we're starting to get questions about, um, believe it or not, ordering or purchasing the, the march, you know, with the, with the new logo. So do we, do we know when this would happen or, you know, when it'll become available?
Yes, so um, we are contracting with BSN Sports for our um, athletic apparel this year and uh, we have asked them to take the logo and put it together with Walpole Timberwolves and um, you know, give us a few different options for clothing. By next week, I think the online clothing store will be open and we'll get that out as soon as it is ready.
Great. You'll be a great one to add to your uh, e-notes uh, tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Imbush. Jen, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I wanted to say, Scotty, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job, um, as usual. And I would love it if we could add the history to the notes. Um, you know, I know sometimes when we do our meeting minutes, it doesn't have as much detail, but um, as someone who didn't grow up in Walpole, I find the history and the tie into history um, of the town to be especially important. And I just think people should know about, um, you know, where the town came from and how this ties in. And you did such a beautiful job explaining it. Uh, so I really would love it if more people could hear about that. Thanks, Scotty, for doing such a great job.
Very good point, Jen. All right, um, we could continue to chat, but it has gotten way later than we intended it to, Scotty. But we very, very much appreciate every time you come and this was a great report that you gave us this evening. Good luck with that concert. I hope to be there. I, I hope to celebrate a number of things at outdoors at the high school this year. So um, good luck. Okay, that gets us to our next item, which is a very important recognition for a very patient teacher who has to get up early tomorrow morning. So I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. Goff.
Sure. Um, Walpole High School Teacher and Student Council Advisor Carrie McMenon has been named the Massachusetts Student Council Advisor of the Year. Carrie's outstanding efforts, commitment to excellence and service to our students are just a few reasons this honor was bestowed on her. Carrie has spent countless time and energy building such a strong sense of belonging along with an environment of trust and respect with the Walpole High School Student Council. The many programs, volunteer opportunities, student activities, projects, ideas, and active participation in our local, regional and state student council programs demonstrate and is indicative to Carrie's commitment to this group. We are very proud to recognize Ms. Mack tonight and we congratulate her.
Very nice introduction, Bridget. We're tremendously proud, Carrie. Um, and I, I just have a few comments also. I, I think that strong, vibrant, diversified and articulate student leadership can really be overlooked sometimes in terms of how important it is to create a positive school culture. Adults can only take the work so far and fortunately, Carrie is one of those people who learned early on this lesson and she believes this in everything she's done, everything she continues to do in Walpole. Fundamentally, she's an English teacher and she could be here being recognized in that capacity because she loves to teach and she loves to teach students of all abilities to become strong, fluent writers. It's a real gift. But in fact, she's equally passionate and truthfully, probably even a little more passionate in helping students find their voice and their place as student leaders. I know that she will want to share a few things with us tonight, but a few things that I hope she talks about are the number of members that are in the Walpole Student, Walpole High School Student Council. The ways that the Walpole High School Student Council has tried to increase its diversity and the opportunities for leadership training that Carrie encourages students to avail themselves of. But I don't want to steal her thunder, rather, would rather use this as an opportunity on behalf of the very large number of students, graduates, parents, colleagues and many others who want to thank Carrie for all she does to contribute to Walpole and congratulate her for her fine work. That being said, Carrie, the floor is yours.
Well, Nancy, I'd first like to say that one of our first true interactions was when I asked if I could take your daughter to Las Vegas.
Yeah.
Be 17 and you were like, yeah, of course you can. Um, I want to think the, I mean, I don't know a part of my life without student council. When I was 14 and a freshman in high school, the captain of the field hockey team said, you should join student council and I did. And throughout my entire life, whether it be high school, college, working in event planning, um, becoming a teacher, student council has always been sort of this other family or this other group that prides itself on accepting everyone's wackiness. But also allows students to find their voice. I found my voice in high school and I've always said to kids like, you guys drive the bus and I'll just provide the gas and the brakes sometimes. Um, and I just want to thank the school committee and um, Mr. Imbush for all their support. Um, I once said to Steve, like, I don't know if you think I'm really good at my job or you just trust me a lot. Um, because I don't think he said no to any of my ideas. And, you know, it's been 14 years. I can't believe it's been 14 years and um, I don't know, it's been amazing. I think for me, um, I mean, I grew up in Gloucester, Massachusetts. That's my home. That's where I like went to high school. But, and I've always considered myself sort of a Boston native. I'm sorry if I get like upset. In February, my seven-year-old niece was diagnosed with sarco- uh, sarcoma cancer. And I put something up on Facebook and to a GoFundMe link and the amount of former students and parents and colleagues that donated showed me that Walpole is really my community. And so I thank everyone for their support.
You deserve every single bit of it, Carrie, because your heart is, is part of Walpole. And I think, um, I think that that's just important, that people are able to give back. Some of the, some of the, the love that you have shared with our kids. So it's, it's super important. It's super, super important. And I think that um, when people are going through hard times, there's not so much that you can always do, but um, I'm glad you felt supported. I'm very glad you felt supported. Steve, I think you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I, I don't, don't have a whole lot to add that hasn't been said already, but um, you know, I just wanted to mention that Carrie is the real deal. Carrie, Carrie is the, is, is the type of student council advisor that every school wishes they had. She's so well-deserving of this honor. She is, she has a huge impact on the students of Walpole High, not only in student council, but in her classes and all across the school. The positive culture that she generates across the student body is really exceptional and uh, we are very proud of you, Carrie. So, uh, congratulations.
Yes, thank you so very much. Scotty, good for you. There you go.
Uh, well, following uh, Mr. Imbush, I'd just like to add that uh, Ms. Mack is one of the only teachers that um, is universally loved by all the students, um, especially council members. And um, she's really been so instrumental to planning so many of our events and activities for the past three years I've been here. So um, she's definitely deserving of this award.
I like your term, the real deal, Steve, because that, that kind of sums it up. I think that um, that, you know, she's a sort of after senior English teacher also. I, it's, it's, it's a pretty nice package that you have, have given to our town, Carrie. Um, so we um, we support you, we thank you and um, only wish we could be there in person because um, standing ovation for you. You, you really deserve this award. The last time I asked, I thought you had somewhere around 80 students on student council. Am I crazy or is that, it, it's a big number, isn't it?
This year, we did not have elections. Um, so we had an open council. Um, so I think our membership is around like 120. Um, and the reason for doing this was mainly because of the freshmen not being able to get to know each other from the other schools and that sort of being unfair for any type of fall election. And obviously, we've had to sort of operate in a reduced capacity. Last year, we had 64 members.
Okay. And that just speaks to the, the approach that, that Carrie has in terms of being very, very inclusive and knowing that some leaders are not the, the loud type. Some leaders are, are amazing in a quiet way, but they might not be the ones who would be elected if each grade was electing four or five representatives. So I think it's a great thing that you do. I really do. And just for the record, I told my daughter no to the Las Vegas thing about 16 times before we came forward and talked to you. It was not an easy sell on her part. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you for being here. I'm sorry it was such a delay. But we really, really, really appreciate what you have to offer. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that gets us to our new business items and I think that it would be fair to say that we don't expect Scotty or Carrie or Steve to stay. You're welcome if you want to, but um, I think the beauty rest might do you good. Sorry, guys.
I have to take out my new puppy that's been like crying in her, in her crate for
Oh, sorry about that puppy.
That's okay.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Okay, our next item is to vote the FY22 budget amount because the last time we took an actual vote was at the end of January. Things have changed since then, but the very good news is that we are able to secure a budget that we um, brought forward in January that will bring the district forward in some very nice ways. Dr. Goff? Or Mr., Mr. Frischa? I'm not sure who wants
No, it's fine. Um, I can do it. It just, you have um, the updated, a copy of the updated consolidated spreadsheet that represents our tentative FY22 budget request. Nancy mentioned that we have, we have town meeting on Saturday, 10 o'clock, everybody, 10 o'clock. And um, so we need, uh, the administration is recommending a tentative FY22 budget vote in the amount of $49,113,775.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or any points that they want to discuss? Yes, Mr. Buckley?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. I'd make a motion to approve uh, the FY22 budget request from the Walpole Public School System. I began to do that just as I clicked off the um, the number in front of me. In the amount of 46, I'm sorry, 49, uh, million, 100, 113,775 dollars, uh, this budget request. Was the culmination of really two years of work between our staff and the, the townside staff, a tremendous amount of late nights and deep dives by this committee, our colleagues here and, and most notably, uh, Mr. Frischa, Dr. Goff and his finance team assisted by Mr. Han. I think it's something we can be proud of. It's something that makes key investments. We'd want to do it's, it's a moderate budget which shows our willingness to work with the community, to wait our turn, um, to be good partners. Um, I'm proud of it. I'm excited to talk about it on Saturday.
I'll second the motion made by Mr. Buckley.
Great. Okay, so that was a motion by Bill. A second, was that you, Carrie? That's what I thought. Okay. And as Bill said, this is um, something to be, something to be proud of. It, it does meet some important needs. We built what we called a needs-based budget and um, we worked collaboratively and effectively with um, the town administrator, with the finance committee. And um, I think that, that it's something that will help us recover from the pandemic, meet the needs that have been two years in the waiting. And um, I think, I think it's, it's something that's going to serve the district well. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll poll the committee, Mark? We can't hear you, Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Nancy, I mean, gosh, I'm tired. Um, Nancy, yes, 700. And thank you to the administrators who are on the call, but all the administrators who helped us to put this budget together. Um, okay, that gets us to the fact that we need to appoint a designated member to the two collaboratives that we belong to. So the first one is we have the opportunity to reappoint Dr. Goff to be the um, direct, the, on the board of directors for BIKO. And um, I don't think there's too much to talk about unless you want to make a speech, Dr. Goff?
No, I'm good. We can, we're moving along.
We'll take a motion then to appoint Bridget Goff as the, our representative to the BIKO collaborative.
Go move.
Go move.
Okay, someone's like a, uh, motion from Bill, a second from Jen? Is that
What a team, what a team.
There you go. Okay, again, polling the committee, Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen? Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. And just to not blow by this completely, the collaboratives are the two organizations that we belong to. It's the like the the sharing that we do with districts nearby. We collaborate on special ed services, but we also collaborate on things like professional development, on cooperative purchasing, on oh, there's a whole lot of things. Online learning, there there are a number of things that we benefit from as we collaborate with the towns nearby. And the next item then is the the representative to tech. I've been the representative for a number of years, largely because, well, I've learned to love the organization tremendously. The board meets on Friday mornings at eight fifteen, which just either fits in or doesn't fit into people's schedules. But I will be glad to be the representative again. On the other hand, I would be glad to have somebody else have that opportunity if they're looking if looking for it, because it's a great learning place. I would still continue to go because I love tech. Bill?
Three, Madam Chair, just before I make a motion, I just want to point out you know, you've been our representative for a very long time. And it's important for the community to know that tech has a really big footprint in Walpole. Not and by no small part because of your involvement. They have the old bird you know, bird facility up in Ndean next to Jen's house where so our students were going to tech programs at the bird facility at the old Plimpton School. There there were places within Fisher that we did. They didn't have to go outside of town. And I think, you know, we've we've worked strategically to bring these programs into our school buildings in some cases and others into our community as a whole. And it just enriches the community. And it's it's just it's just a good thing that our kids don't have to go to Framingham or very far afield to receive a lot of these services while availing themselves. So it's a lot of work on your part. I sure as hell don't want to do it. So I would make a motion to reappoint you to your are you are you still the chair of the tech board?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
To the to the tech board.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion from Bill. Was the second, Kristen?
Yes.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Please keep it in mind, if you ever want to attend a meeting, you find yourself available on a Friday morning at eight fifteen. It's like seven meetings throughout the year. Great connections, great people. But we have a motion and a second, so I will poll the committee. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That makes it seven, zero, zero. Okay, our next item is to talk about a timeline for the superintendent evaluation. And if it's okay with everybody, I think I'll take that one, Bridget. It's the time of year where, as a committee, we we all have to take a look and evaluate. Dr. Goff, this year has been extraordinarily different and difficult. But we have agreed to concentrate on on providing the constructive feedback that we can can do. We follow the rule of no surprises. So I think that, you know, hopefully it does not feel like a stressful thing. I think it's just always good to take a step back from the day to day and look at the big picture, look at where we're going, and keep the lines of communication open. So that being said, we have some information from Dr. Goff that documents things that have been going on this year. We have some agreed upon goals. And as we evaluate, please keep in mind the the changing landscape due to the COVID year. Essentially, we wanted to just agree that her evaluation will be presented at the next school committee meeting, which gives us a fairly short timeline. One week from tomorrow is ideally when we need the evaluations turned in to me. The true drop dead deadline is Saturday, May eighth. But please try for Friday, May seventh, if it's at all possible. Because the subcommittee, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee will meet with with Dr. Goff on Monday, um, whatever that Monday is. I think it's the 11th, no, sorry, the 10th. And I really don't want to be doing the compiling on Mother's Day if at all possible. So let's do our best. On the other hand, I think that that we all feel that, um, you know, Bridget has given up an awful lot of her time, so we need to do this well and do the best you can in terms of hitting those deadlines. And Mary, I'll plan on working with you during the day on that Monday to put together as much information as we can that we'll be talking from a draft on Monday afternoon, subcommittee members, okay? Any questions about that? Sean?
Is there an instrument that we're supposed to use?
Good point. I just realized as you raised your hand, yes, there is an instrument. It is it is extremely comprehensive. And for that reason, we we zero in on certain components more so than others. And I will work with Mary to get that into everybody's emails tomorrow, okay? But yes, good point. Any other questions? Okay, that gets us to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Just a brief COVID update, as you know, and Walpole cases are trending down and and so is the the school district, which is great. After meeting with the head nurse and the board of health on Monday, it was decided that all safety protocols will remain in place for now. This includes our mask wearing and contact tracing. And we're just coming off of April break, so we need to get through the next two weeks to look at the data, and then we will reevaluate. Our nursing staff has really worked hard to get us this far, and we want to continue to keep our classrooms open as well as our after school activities and events. The MIAA stated that at this time, there are no changes or updates to sports modification. We're getting more and more of our high school students vaccinated. So hopefully, we'll have some less close contacts. And I believe we have about 413 staff members who are fully will be fully vaccinated as of April 30th. So that that's great news. Commissioner Riley mandated all middle schools to return on April nine, 29th, sorry, this past Tuesday, and all high schools to fully return on May 17th. However, since we all returned on April 5th, we don't need to be concerned about this this transition. I mentioned at last school committee meeting that on April 1st, Commissioner Riley announced that he was going to recommend to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to modify some graduation requirements for the class of 2002. And this recommendation was approved. So this year's 11th graders are not required to take the MCAS test. However, three through eight and 10 are still required to take the MCAS test, and that's extended through June to provide some maximum flexibility for the school districts. Last day of school, just to reiterate, and principals will get this out as another reminder in their e-notes that the last day for students is Thursday, June 17th. This will be an early release day. So principals will send out exact dismissal times for each school because we just may not be familiar with what what a traditional dismissal time is this year. So they will make sure to communicate that. And the last day for staff is Friday, June 18th. In terms of summer programming, we are in the initial stages of designing and planning our summer enrichment program. This year, our in-person summer program for K to eight students, they will have the option to attend one to three weeks of summer programming. And currently, it will be free to all interested students and families. An interest survey will be sent out to parents and families very soon, probably early next week, to help us determine preliminary staffing needs and enrichment resources. The high school will be providing will have an online offering for students in core academic areas in order to supplement any learning loss or growth. Details will be forthcoming, and families should also look for as a reminder to look for a survey next week. Bus applications will be going out in mid-May. And it was also announced that school breakfast, snacks, and lunches will be free through the summer of 2022. So that is that is great news for our families. Finally, I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Brizos' third grade class at Elm Street School. They wrote me a well thought out persuasive letter as part of their literacy curriculum about a needed science lab for their school. So I visited their classroom this morning with Mrs. Brizero to hear more about it and to ask them some clarifying questions, of course, the English teacher that I am. And they it was great. We had a great time, and they now have some research and some budgeting to do for me, which I think they're excited about. And I just want to thank them for their advocacy and their engagement in our science curriculum. So nice work. And after, I'll go into the MSBA update.
Okay, are there any questions for Dr. Goff at this point? If not, we'll go right on to that next topic, the middle school, middle the middle school building project.
Okay, Mark, Mark, feel free to add. I, along with the Compass Project Management Team in Tappee, went before the MSBA Board on April 14th. So I am pleased to report that the Board of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, voted to approve the town of Walpole as part of its invitation for for the feasibility study to proceed into schematic design. And that's to replace the existing Bird Middle School and Eleanor Johnson Middle School with the new facility, serving students in grades six through eight on the existing Bird Middle School site. We were one of four districts invited into schematic design. So that's really exciting news.
Do you have some things to add, Mark?
I would add a reminder to people who in the public is paying attention at this time of the evening. But people really need to start paying closer attention, whether it be going to the school website or speaking to their school committee representatives or the town meeting representatives. I'm a little bit concerned that there's not a sort of a critical mass of people paying attention, which is an issue all the time, any given issue that comes before the town. There's always that concern about that critical mass of of people that are either in favor or against paying paying attention. So I think we all have some work to do as far as that goes. Today, we met and discussed safety and security measures with the school. So we're kind of getting into the nitty gritty details, which is which is which is good. And this Saturday's town meeting will be will be worthwhile as well. Does anybody have any questions? I think that might be a more productive use of our school committee time with the school building committee updates, if anybody has any questions, as opposed to just a comment or two from myself or or Dr. Goff.
Any questions for Mark? I don't think so. I think that in general, what you know, we are going to be thinking about different ways to gear up. I'm planning on speaking at town meeting on Saturday under Article One and put some notes together. But I think, given the the time of night, I'll just send them to everybody. And if you want to add any comments or adapt in any way, that I I will be glad to take the feedback. It's it's not particularly long, and the point is to just make sure that every town meeting member has heard something about this project in case they're the type that don't seek out the information by going to websites or or things like that. So the the one thing that I did want to ask is, when I talked to Dan Bruce about doing a presentation, he said, that's exactly what Article One is for, and we should do it. But he doesn't want us to try to not turn it into a a question and answer session, but more of just a providing information. And what we agreed to is that some of us will stay around at the end of town meeting and answer any questions. So I'll send this I'll send this to you this evening. If you can, let me know if you're going to be able to be able to stay around at the end of town meeting to answer questions, because I don't want to say everybody's going to be there. If, in fact, everybody's not, but want to give credit if you are going to be there. So that's that's it from my end. Anything else, Mark or Bridget or Sean?
Just a a question about providing information at town meeting. Is there a method to be able to provide like a QR code or something? You know, in some fashion that a town meeting member could scan and, you know, have the school building project website easily easily available or a link to, you know, one of the informative documents that are there just as a means to I I don't think, you know, like the papers aren't going to be lined up on the table. I don't think, you know, everybody kind of staying apart. But just, you know, I know that's a effective means for some people to get the information for looking at it later if they're, you know, not inclined to make the effort.
So are you suggesting a link to the the middle school website?
Just maybe, you know, I was just trying to think of a way to definitely get people to look at it and see clear factual information. That just seems to be something that has come up in regular conversations with people I've talked to multiple times. They, you know, there continues to be wrong information. So I don't know if that's feasible or not, just just asking if there was any way, you know, not myself being as familiar with the flow of what this particular town meeting is going to look like.
Yeah, the truth is, I'm not sure how to do something like that. I'm sure it's not that hard to do either, you know, to just have a QR code that people could could use. I know that Mark and Bridget recorded a information, and it's that information is posted. I know that the the website is active. And if there's somebody on staff that can figure out how to make a poster with a QR code on it, I think it's a good idea, but I just, you know, I can't take that on.
Yeah, me, too. We can look look into that. And then we also, Sean, there's a handout in all the town meeting members in their packets, too. So that was the it's a two sided color handout for them.
But your point is good about the QR code. Like, that probably is something that should be on the handouts going forward. Anything else? Okay, that gets us to subcommittee activity. Are there subcommittees that need to report this evening? If not, then let's go to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens trying to comment?
No.
No, I don't see any.
Okay, and that gets us to warrants, donations, and minutes. Sean?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. The warrant numbers are two, two, one, zero, four, one, two, two, one, zero, four, two, 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 one, zero, four, three, and two, two, one, zero, four, four.
Second.
We have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. I need to poll the committee. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes, seven, zero, zero. Go ahead, Sean.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to the Bird Middle School from Bay State Textiles Recycling for the amount of twenty two dollars and twenty five cents to the Bird Middle School from the Help See Commission for the amount of forty two dollars and seventy seven cents and to the Johnson Middle School Anonymous for the Grayson Beauregard donation, fifty five dollars.
We have a motion by Sean. I just need a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. I need to pull the committee. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 700. Okay, and minutes, do we have some?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the April 8, 2012 regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Bill, a second by Kristen, again, polling the committee. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes. Okay, that gets us to your job, Mark Green.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn if I could.
Second.
That you could. We have a motion by Mark, a second by Kristen, polling for the last time. Mark?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, Nancy, yes, 700. Thank you for your attention and your patience this evening. We will see you in two weeks. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.